Call the meeting to order. First business, I want to remind everybody that we have the public health regulations. While you're seated, you can remove your mask, but anytime you leave your chair, you must wear a mask. First item is the agenda. Be it resolved that the agenda for the May 6, 2021 meeting be accepted as presented. Somebody please move that. Counselor Corey, second, Counselor Sojik. All in favor? Be it resolved that the special meeting of council be recessed to allow council to hold a public hearing to receive representations from any person who wish to make them in respect to the 2021 financial plan. Somebody please move that. Counselor McDonald, second, or Counselor McGregor. All in favor? Here. Okay, passing on to our C A O.
So everybody should have a copy of the public hearing presentation for your chairs. I'll just walk through that with you. That kind of outline is the biggest changes with respect to budget. So included tonight, I will discuss a little bit of review of the municipal board decisions on local improvement programs, the decision I have on the budget, an actual review of the budget itself. I will address some mill rates and some next steps. So with respect to the two local improvement programs, one for the installation of fiber optics, one in Waukesha and one in Hallowa area, they both require a rural environment. That island required partnership to the municipal board, and that was true. So the impact that that has on the budget is that for those individuals who opted not to prepay local improvement program, there will be a levy that will show up by new tax bill. This levy is a third price recharge or waiver. It's not a legislative assessment. The term in Waukesha was for two years and one year of additional grants, and so there will be one year remaining of the levy, and the term for the rural area is for three years. So with respect to the 2021 overall budget, the budget is $3,989,308.13. Not include a lot of capital projects, and those projects will only proceed if the grants are received. That number of birth and current children aged eight have the option of plenty of work. Excluding local improvement programs, that is an increase of $25,850 remaining on the Going through the categories, general government, the government's legislative, general administrative, the government staff, office, legal, our auditing fees, assessment and taxation, and other general government, which comprises elections, conventions, insurance, intergovernmental relations between grants. The total budget for this category is $450,806.50. That shows on page three of the financial plan. The biggest changes in that part of the budget is the taxation line item, there's an increase of $7,785. That's due to pay the local improvement project on municipal plans, and it also returns to the normal value of $14,500 for conventions in the event that the COVID restrictions are lifted. The next quarter of the budget is protective services, so that includes police, fire, emergency measures, and monetary pension. The budget for this category is $131,023.60. That shows on page three of the financial plan. It's a decrease of $89,757. The reason there is the decrease, anyone remember last year, the provincial government was offering grants for anybody to do preemptive work for flooding. We were successful in part of the 90,000 thousand $130 that were awarded that grant. That was the one year old, so it doesn't show in this year's. And the other change in protective services is the amount that is being paid for firefighters and emergency services resulting from provincial requirements that they pay in the district or associations. Transportation services, so this includes roads and streets, staff equipment repairs, maintenance, equipment insurance, shop, yard reparations, and asset management, as well as road construction and maintenance, which includes ground compression, trucking, road maintenance and reconstruction, sidewalks, ditches, and bridges. The budget for this category is $840,650.10. That shows on page four of the financial plan. That would be a decrease of $2,219.10. But what should be noted here is that the road reconstruction projects show in the capital budget, and as a result, the federal government doubling its gas tax for this year. The $480,000 is going to go toward the roads. Environmental services, this includes garbage and recent collection, garbage collection releases grounds, and other environmental accounts, such as recycling. The budget for this is $116,099.18. That amount also shows on page four of the financial plan. It's a reduction of $22,359.57, and that could be the result of this being the first year under our new tender for our lease management services. Last year, it was split between the old and the new. This year, it's entirely new, so it has an exception. Public health and welfare, so this is for public health that includes sanitarys, handy tractors, and senior's independent services. The budget for this is $25,100. It shows on page four of the financial plan, and that's unchanged from the first. Environmental development service, so this includes planning and zoning as well as community development. The budget is $6,300. It's a reduction of $2500. Economic development service, this includes construction of assets, meat control, veterinary services, water resources and transportation, tourism, and staff appreciation. The budget for this is $32,655.10. It is a decrease of $27,168.35, and the majority of that is $25,000 that had been paid last year on the Waukesha local improvement plan. That payment doesn't show on record for all of this year because it has been rewarded by lots of it shows on the debenture to the debtless side. Recreation and cultural services, this includes community centers and halls, pools, ricks, and arenas, parks and playgrounds, grants and museums. The budget is $170,004. That shows on page five of your financial plan, and that's an increase of $200,000. Fiscal services, so this includes transfers to capital and utility. The budget is $1,635,469.17. That figure shows on page five of your financial plan. It's an increase of $293,719.30. This includes capital projects in the amount of $1,002,000, which is being funded from reserves. It includes projects in the amount of $557,157.77, for which grants have been applied for, and it includes $76,311.40 in debenture funding, and that shows up on page 11 of your financial In the transposition, this includes amounts that are being transferred into specific reserves. The budget is $522,618. That shows on page five of your financial plan. It's an increase of $189,527. This includes the doubling up of the gas tax, which we pay coming from the federal government, and it also includes an increase in equipment reserve of $180,000. Other revenues are a lot less. Revenue includes other revenue, which is taxes added, penalties, licenses, permits, sales of services, sales of goods, trailer car rentals, raising leases, and returns from assets. It also includes municipal operating grants for the individual and gas tax, flood grants realized, and ISF grants, as well as transfer from reserves. The budget for this is $2,034,833.03. That shows on page two of your financial plan. It's an increase of $197,823.55. The majority of that is the doubling up of the government gas tax this year, and it also is an indication that the current government is successful in applying recreational grants to the law as a route. When the capital budget, this includes capital projects or purchases of the plan for 23 months, such as the purchase of equipment, building of the office, and new projects. It also includes several projects that will only proceed if the funding, grant funding is divided. That includes cement formation, the gap in projects, some paved road rebuilds, road buildups, Waukesha water line, as well as the rural water lines. The known expenditure is $1,002,000. That's been funded from reserves, actually on page 13, and the remainder is depending on whether or not grants are issued. So the utility budget, that's to be reminded, and the quality of this keeps supporting staff. So the utility budget is wholly funded by the utility. The budget is $775,108.60. That amount shows on page six of your financial plan. It's an increase of $129,329.84. Included in that is $26,581, which is for an operator on training, and the remainder for the utility projects are totally transferred to capital. With respect to the rest of the mill rates, the general mill rate has remained the same at 8.750. The mill rate for recreation against the class 30 agricultural brands drops slightly to 0.258. The mill rate for recreation against all other classes drops slightly to 0.419. The mill rate for this, I think, has Waukesha optics for the zoo, has remained the same at 1.340. When it comes to the per parcel charges, 21 per parcel charges are as follows. There's $50 per parcel for recreation for Waukesha properties that are residential with no available units, that was the same as last year. $135 per parcel for recreation for all other Waukesha properties, that's also the same as last year. $25 per parcel for waste and recycling for all residential properties with no available units, that may be same as last year. $14.93 per parcel for waste and recycling for class 30 agricultural brands, that's a decrease from last year. $90.07 per parcel for waste and recycling for all other class properties, that is also a reduction from last year. And the per parcel rate for Waukesha properties for the zoo is $252,35. And that has remained the same. The new per parcel charges are related to the local improvement program. So for the road fiber optic, the total amount is going to prepay me at $380.95. If you opted not to prepay, what it will result in is an amount on your taxes that equates $130.57 per year for the next three years. And the Waukesha fiber optic is $41.95 for vacant residential properties, and $83.89 for all other properties. It comes worth prepaying the amount on taxes that equates $42.34, and $84.69 respect of late for this year. Moving forward, the next steps is the public hearing will get included this evening. We have to adopt the financial plan that asks for the level of revenue for the province by May 15. We'll provide secondary arrangements for the tax that we got off. I gave you a big information on the work for the province, so they can print it with the tax bills. Tax bills are typically mailed out in July when they come due, who got them on the 31st. In the case of the COVID restrictions, we're not currently, it's closely taped, but we will start without anybody, but including online or on checks, and we may all be able to draw a couple analysis.
Okay. Thank you very much. So now, it's up to people here in the audience, those that wish to make a presentation, representation of any sort, or having questions or concerns, please, all you have to do is stand up, and we have mics around to catch your voice, so if you speak loud enough, we'll be able to hear them. So please proceed.
Okay, I hope you can hear me from here. Do you want me to go a little closer?
No, you're good right there.
Okay, just kind of trying to figure out this. This is different kind of system that we have with the beds, so I, if I'm off a little bit, but I got five little things here. I just wanted to try and get some information there or something like that. The first one to talk about is road maintenance, and I don't know if there's a capital plan for long-term repairs. I know the place where we live, we got about five different options to get to pavement from where we are, and there's not one of them quite often that's very passable as far as severe washboard and frost boils and things like that. You know, if there's no, is there a capital plan? Is after a while that, if there's been a frost boil for 10 years, probably there's going to be one in the 11th year. And, you know, it's a little bit hazardous when you're trying to drive up that, and, you know, we have a motorcycle, and trying to get on that kind of stuff is unbearable some days, and the washboard is so bad, it pretty vibrates your teeth out. And, you know, the, going to the, to the dump there by, on the Trees Bank Road, there's like 300 or 400 meters of solid washboard, like that all right there. I don't know why it would've been left that way, but you know what? If it needs something to be repaired, is there a plan to do some of this kind of stuff?
Yeah, if you note in the budget, under transportation, we have $890,000, I think, that we put into transportation, which is primarily for roads. Now, as far as the frost boils go, there's new ones come up every, every spring, and as well as ones you repaired last year, sometimes they blow out at each end. So we have a constant battle with those, and we understand that, and we are looking at other means. We haven't got a master plan to say we're going to rebuild certain roads because of the cost involved. This is quite atrocious. We'd have to get a lot of funding for that. Our road and bridge program that was presented through the provincial government several years ago gave us options for that. However, they've changed their funding strategy, and so now, what they do is they offer us a per capita amount every year, which sums up to $36,000 for our roads. So that's what we get from the provincial government to fix our roads. So it's constantly on us, and at 890,000, we could, we can go over that, and we've talked about that on a couple occasions, whether we want to make a master plan to say rebuild a complete road, but of course, that would take hundreds of thousands of dollars, increasing taxes substantially. So we're, we're aware of the, the concerns. Last year, we won an award for maintenance of our roads. We won an award for maintenance of our roads last year, our munis, our rural roads, so we're pretty proud of that, but at the same time, we do know that they need more work, constant work, and we're, our public works is aware and trying to do that as much as they can.
Well, I don't know who gave out the reward because it was, I've had the privilege or misfortune of driving on roads, and the only one that I can think that's worse than some of the ones is the one from Churchill up to the Rocket Range in the Muskeg and Stones. That was a bad road. Or, but even the one from Thompson to Gillum is far better than a lot of these here roads. And, you know, washboard is not nothing new, and if there's not, you know, is there, you know, if the guys don't know how to repair it, you know, is there a training session? The operators need to go to training and say, you know, here's, here's proper ways to do this, to remediate that. I didn't see anything in a training budget as far as any training for staff.
No. I would encourage you to, if you have an opportunity, to visit our public works people and, and, you know, voice your concerns, that's where the roads are that are, that you're considering, that are not very passable, and we'll do our, what we can to, to improve that area.
Yeah, I left, I did phone one time, left a message. I'm just in construction to build a new house in the area, so.
Okay.
That's taken my time, and that, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I think it would be important to note too, that the, the gas tax, a hundred thousand dollars being allocated to things like fixing frost boils that's here, so that's an increase in that budget. So I would make sure that the office knows where those frost boils are. I'm sure they do know, just to make sure that.
Yeah, it, my previous job where I managed an asset department for the government, and $100,000 doesn't hold very far when you start building and doing construction. This, the, the new office or reconstruction, and what's going on? Has there been a little bit of information passed out about, like, some of the specs that were used to tenure this? Is it, is it, you know, is it going to be jaded to one area by setting specs and standards?
Yeah, there's kind of a minimal standards for building, building construction as far as commercial buildings go, and in this situation, municipal buildings. We, we're looking at two options. There was the existing office in the village here that could be renovated and extended, and there's a new office possibility in Nesbit. So we put that through to the architect, the architect developed plans for it, and they were submitted to, to tender. The tenders came due on the 4th of May, so we're expecting those to be dealt with in short order.
Okay, I know that construction now, it's hard to, to give your throat a new lock with the glory code is no longer valid, so with these increased times, the costs are increasing, I don't know how you can get a thing.
Yeah, I think part of the, part of the process with that is that the architect has instituted a requirement for a bid bond, and a bid bond, if they have, that's an insurance policy, it has to be at least 30 days to be held at that amount.
And same with the, with that water, I've seen where it's, I just haven't got the numbers, I think it was 13 million close it was going to be coming from a fed, from a, from a provincial grant.
Provincial or federal?
Yeah, and near 5 million out of local.
Possibility, yes.
Yeah, and most of that kind of stuff usually runs as a, as an over, overrun, so as an overrun, it would be added probably to the 5 million because the government isn't going to say, well, here's more money, that's probably what you're going to be, and so is there a way that you're going to be able to make through that extra cost if it has a, you know, it has a $3 million overrun, well, that's, that's 60% over what you've already budgeted.
Right. So what happens with the, that's a rural water program, that is in its infancy stage as far as where we're developing it. So what we've got to so far is that we had a review done by Water Services to show us what we would have to do, and that's where the numbers came from. That was submitted to the, to the federal and provincial government for grants purposes. So we're looking forward to grants. When that is relayed back to us, see if we get it or not, depending what happens, if we get the funding for it, then at that point, we're going to open it up to the residents in the municipality. Those that want it will have to make it known, they will be the ones that would be paying for it. The hookup beyond what the funding is from the government. So that would be on their, on their dollar. Anybody that doesn't want it would not be paying anything.
Okay. And the last one is with the RF now. You know, we, we opted to do the full payment, but my feeling is that the RM has dealt with RF now, so my expectation is that RM would then deal within as far as the routes and timelines, so that, you know, and the only reason I'm looking at this is if the location where we are is two years down the road before, that's when the schedule comes there, then we can say, okay, we can go with another supplier if we have to guarantee a two-year thing, but I don't want to get into a two-year contract and find out in six months that RF now is going to be there.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'd like the RM to be the, you know, you've done all the negotiating, you've done everything, we, you know, and you would pressure them to say, okay, what's your schedule? What's the timelines and the routes? You're going to go for these timelines, and people on that then will be able to.
Yeah, and what, what's happened so far is RF now has given us a basic outline of where they're going. They, we initially thought it was going to be a three-year program, we, that's what we thought as, as a council. RF now has advised us, they're probably going to be able to get everybody done in a year, in the first year. So everybody in the municipality wants to get hooked up, should get hooked up in the first year if they wish. So that's where it's at. We do have a map in the village, in the municipal office, rather, so if you wanted to visit municipal, they'll give you the basic map, but we can contact RF now to see where they are as far as your location goes. That's not a problem, just matter getting hold of the office.
Okay, good. Thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you for coming.
Could I add to that?
Sure.
Um, RF now, actually, we have two crews that are working for me in June, and probably into July to do two legs of the process, and they anticipate being able to use one of those crews again come August or September to do the third leg. So they are anticipating being done before freeze-out this year.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
All I could say is I'd like to commend the protection services, keeping our budget very low in fundraising, all the volunteers, I think they should be awarded a plug for keeping our tax dollars down. Investigating with corn walls, our, for protection is quite lower than the ground and, or corn balls is, and I commend all the volunteers for being their hard worker and trying to fundraise and trying to keep the tax dollars down.
We will pass it on. Thank you.
And another comment I'd like to ask was the allocation for the funds for a new office. I know that it's good business practice to have all your eggs in one nest to operate the day-to-day operations in one facility, and with my research and my thinking, I know that Nesbit is pretty near a central area of the municipality, and there is a majority of the ratepayers who cover the surrounding area of Nesbit, so if council could consider if they have to build a new office or something, that Nesbit would be their prime location?
Yep. Got it. We understand that, and that's what council has to look at. We have to look also at dollars and cents of it. We, we can't overspend dollars, taxpayers' dollars, without having good reason, and it's, it's come down, it's like many people have sent to me, I've had letters and emails from certain ratepayers saying, there's wants and needs, and we should be watching out what the wants are and just go for the needs. And we need a new office, but we don't want to have increased costs of hundreds of thousands of dollars, so we have to watch that as well. Okay, nothing further? Okay, whereas all representatives in regard to the 2021 financial plan have been dealt with, therefore be it resolved, the public hearing be concluded, and council resume its normal order of business. Somebody please move that. Counselor Sojik, second, Counselor McDonald. All in favor? So go to the general business portion. So go to the general business portion. Be it resolved that the 2021 financial plan of the municipality of Oakland-Wobonisa, as set out in the form approved by the Minister of Municipal Relations, be adopted, and further that the operating and capital estimates outlined in said plan be incorporated in and form part of the 2021 tax levy bylaw. Somebody please move that. Counselor McGregor, second, or Counselor Hatch, all in favor? Under bylaws, bylaw number 092021, being a bylaw to amend boring bylaw number 012021 for rural fiber optics, be it resolved that the bylaw number 092021, being a bylaw to amend boring bylaw number 012021, be read at first time. Somebody please move that. Counselor McDonald, second, or Counselor Hatch, there's no discussion on a first reading, all in favor? Be it resolved that bylaw number 102021, being a bylaw to amend boring bylaw number 022021, be read at first time. Somebody please move that. Counselor McDonald, second, or Counselor Corey, the first reading, all in favor?
Could I just add one thing, and I know we can't debate, but for anybody who's wondering why the bylaws being amended, it was put forward in the amount of what full borrowing would be. Part of the remiss rewards process is to get, give people the opportunity to prepay or pay in cash, so I was done with the third of the period, calling that, and then the manager of the original bylaw, because your raw rolling is what my people were willing to pay, so that is the reason we made it there.
Okay, be it resolved that bylaw number 112021, being the 2021 tax levy bylaw, be read at first time. Somebody please move that. Counselor McDonald, second, or Counselor Corey, no discussion or first reading, all Okay, be it resolved that this meeting down, now does adjourn. Somebody please move that. Counselor McGregor, second, or Counselor Corey, all in favor?